Is that anyone needs us to consider? Okay, for my chairs report today, I would just like to extend my deepest gratitude for two West staff members, Heidi Gallagher and Andrew Staker. The concert slash art show was, as usual, amazing. They can always seem to find a way to top themselves. But as I was playing around afterwards, I made it to the music website. And, you know, I actually emailed and just was like, ooh, could I use this as a model for what continuous learning can look like? So just, just really a spectacular website for families and for students and hopefully aspiring educators to take a look at. So I just wanted to really acknowledge that. We have such an amazing staff and I'm driving home thinking, you've never said anything about the staff in your chair report. So today marks the first, but really just wanted to highlight that. So with that said, are there any members that wish to speak? All right, we will move on to citizens. And hearing none, we will move on to priority business. So we'll go right to Mary Beth's report.
Okay, so we have been busy with filling some of our positions between retirements and resignations. And I just want to let you know that we have hired, appointed, I'm not quite sure how to word it, Andrew Staker to be our technology person as well as our music person. So Andrew is, as you know, amazing and he has three licenses. So in elementary education, one through six, music and instructional technology specialist. So when I first hired Andrew was for technology, that is when Mrs. Holmes went to grade four. And so he is thrilled to go back into his other passion, which that being technology. And Lisa's other position was the 20% science position. And Mrs. Gallagher has accepted that position as well. So she will be art as well as science. And if you recall from last year, in the previous year is when she did a lot of her STEAM. Instead of STEM, she extended it to STEAM, project-based learning units of study. And it made the front page of the Cape Cod Times when they did the shark one. So we're thrilled about that. We've been busy interviewing folks for the grade three position. So we have a total of five candidates currently. We interviewed three after school yesterday. We have another on Thursday and our fifth is on Monday. And on Tuesday, I will be interviewing our currently only candidate for the title on math in library position. So those are the additions to my report.
Great. And do any members have questions for Mary Beth about her, the rest of the report? Yes, Laura?
Yeah, so I thought there was a grade three hire.
There was, and then Mrs. Anderson announced her retirement after our last meeting. And so Ms. Shoemaker really wanted to go back to kindergarten where she had been many years ago. And so then Ms. Mrs. Demucy wanted to go back to grade two, which was the grade three. I'm gonna have to make a map.
Okay, it was the grade two, three that, okay, got it.
Welcome to schools during COVID. I see Martha's hand.
Yeah, this might be a senior moment. Do we now, will we be having two third grades?
Correct.
Correct. The mystery is solved.
All right, any other questions for Mary Beth? All right, we will move on to the FY21 expenditure report with Giovanna.
Thank you. We'll go directly to page 10 of the report. The prior month balance was $119,537. We put back into the budget $189, leaving a balance of $119,726. We still have amounts that we have not reclassified to school choice. We had earmarked to reclassify $20,000 in school choice, which we won't need to do because we have such a robust balance. And we also have substitute line items for the teacher, the nurse and the custodian that have been encumbered but not yet spent of $19,334. Next month, Principal Rodman will present her spend down plan for the school committee review and discussion and approval. The only item this month that had a significant change over $1,000 was on page one. At the top of the page, line 4003, salary central office, we put back into the budget $1,473. And this line item, as well as the next line item, 4004, other central office expense will fluctuate until the end of the school year. That's all based upon the amounts expended in the central office budget. So as that changes, the salaries change, that changes as well. So that is my report. We still have not allocated the reserve for negotiation. Once all of the collective bargaining unit contracts have been approved by the school committees, then we'll go back and unencumber those funds and distribute them accordingly. Any questions?
Right, thank you so much, Giovanna.
You're welcome.
Okay, so item C is a revisiting of school committee communication. So as I said I would, I did reach out to the other chairs with our query about school committee. We, so we had discussed, this is really in reference to the email, having our emails published right now, I am finding that email. Okay, because I just want to get responses for you. So I placed this back on the agenda so that we could hear what the other chair said. And then, so I'll read you what they responded and then we can have our discussion from there. But it really is only centering right now around the emails, having our email accounts. So just want to see what I said. So I said, at our West School Committee meeting, we discussed publishing our email addresses for public contact. One member brought up the issue after noticing that other committees published their email addresses on the school websites. This prompted another member to do some research. She discovered there could be certain liabilities with improper communication. We are wondering if a discussion with the joint would be important instead of making our own committee decision. We envision voting yea or nay to the idea as a district. Then if needed, setting clear parameters and pathways for communication. And then I just asked them to contact me. So I heard back from some, not all. This is Judy Lindahl. I don't think we Eastham have ever had a problem with improper communication. I think it's great to have them up there on the school web. It's also on the town site, just gives a bit of openness for concerns and transparency of our processes. I have no problem having a discussion and perhaps handing it over to the policy committee. My view is if the teachers have their emails public, I should have mine too. We would love to hear your thoughts. And then Chris Easley, good morning. A couple of quick points. As an elected body, I believe the public has a right to contact elected school committees. So therefore, the email addresses must be published. The problem occurs if a majority of the school committee is communicating by email and in essence, conducting school committee business by email. That would violate the open meeting law. I believe that the solution would be a training on open meeting law rules on communication that could be done locally or at a joint meeting. I also believe that just because of the smaller size of the elementary school committees, it's a much easier rule to violate. Note, everyone can receive the same email, they just can't discuss, debate, discuss or debate school committee issues by email that is addressed to the majority of the school committee. So those were the two chairs that responded. And so I would just like to open up discussion on how we would like to move forward on this issue. Martha?
I think, I say, I just feel that it should be something that is district-wide, one way or another, I would feel better moving it up to either Union 54 and the region separately or doing it at a joint meeting, having a discussion about it at a joint meeting. I do want to say, I did receive an email from someone who does not even live in our district. I don't want to go into details about it, but the person knew my, my school email address. So since it's a NOSID address, it does not require, you know, a doctorate in spy skills or something to figure out how to reach us. It's just a matter of, for me, it's more a matter of, I think, just as Judy, Judy said, being available and showing that we want to be transparent. We want to be available to the people we represent. So we are available, but I want, it would be good if people knew that. That's not terribly, I think I have sunstroke. It's not terribly articulate, but it's definitely. I'm hoping that, that as a, as a whole school committee, we can come to some sort of agreement about it.
Jill?
I did raise questions and concerns at the last meeting. So I, it seems kind of moot to go through everything I presented. But if we go ahead, I feel strongly that we need a common denominator and be on the same page as far as what do we respond to as individuals? What do we take back to the committee to deliberate on? Because one school committee member could respond quite differently than another school committee member. And that's where it gets really muddy and murky and we could really get ourselves into more trouble. It could really open up Pandora's box. So if and when we go forward on this, I feel strongly that we really have to have some rubrics, if you will. And as I raised the last time, if we need guidance on how to respond individually or as a group, who do we go to? You know, would it be human resources? Would it be some media person that the central office has? So I really feel quite strongly that we need to flesh these things out before, or if we go forward. And we are volunteers. There are some school committee committees that get stipends, a little salary of some kind. We are volunteers. You know, another thing that I wonder about, you know, I'm doing site visits again. I am having weeks now that I leave, travel on a Sunday and I come back on a Friday night. I, for one, am not going to be able to respond quickly when I'm working off Cape like that and have a couple of hours after a long workday to respond to individuals. And I'm a volunteer and I don't need any more stress. If we're going to have, you got to respond to somebody within two days, then I might as well resign right now because I'm not going to be able to fulfill that. And again, we're volunteers. And I read what Glenn Koocher had said from MASK as well, when I consulted with him, that he's, he pretty much echoed that, be careful. And yeah, so that's where I stand. I mean, I could go through my whole page of what I read over last time, but I don't feel it's necessary.
Okay.
For my concerns, yeah.
Thank you. Martha?
I do completely agree, Jill. I think if we do move forward with this, there should be some sort of an in-service as part of our joint meeting or locally to talk about what is, what is an okay response. In, in fact, I think it's an okay response if you're getting an email. And you might, because you, you do have a NOSID email address. I'm assuming that's how this person found me. Sometimes the only response you can make or should make is, thank you for sharing your ideas with me. Or, you know, thank you for reaching out or something like that. And then bring it back to the committee or to the joint committee or to the superintendent or whatever is appropriate at that point. One thing that happened recently at the chairs meeting, Betsy, and I meant, I wanted to talk to you about this. Several school chairs received letters about the last day of school issue. And that's an example. I didn't know whether you had, Betsy, or not, so I just stayed out of that part of the conversation. But I think that's an important thing for us to hear about, not act on, but to be aware of, that there, there are sometimes things that are troubling to people that we don't know about. Just in terms of communication. But I absolutely agree, we can't just go off and do it and not know how to respond to people and not make sure that we're keeping our boundaries secure, as, as it were. I absolutely agree with that.
Thank you, Martha. Is anyone else want to comment?
I mean, yeah, I think, yeah, I agree, I think with both of you that we just have to, you know, be careful. I mean, I think it's, it would be an easy email back to say, thank you for your concerns. I'll bring it to the committee. And, you know, I, you know, I don't, I think just to respond, you know, I don't think it's that big a deal to just then hold off for, on a response. So I, yeah, I agree. I mean, I think we have to be careful, but I think, you know, putting our email out there, you know, I think would be good, so.
Okay, Mary Beth?
Yeah, just, I think it would be a good idea to somehow, within this process, to just educate the public on what the roles are of school committees so that that doesn't get to be a gray area. You know, I think sometimes people think that if they're unhappy with something, if they go to school committee, therefore it will change.
So I'm hearing a lot of really wonderful input here. And I would just like to summarize. So I think we're probably all in favor of taking a step forward on this. I think we all feel like it's probably important or okay to put our emails out there, but not just out there. So I would like to suggest that I take these next actions and how I will take them. And then if you guys agree, we can proceed. So I will, I can contact Gail Briere, she's our Union 54 lead, and Chris, and just speak to them about the fact that we, we feel like we need training. And, and whether that training be something that the chairs kind of put together, because I think we have some really salient points. So for example, you know, clarification of how, what our responsibilities of response are. And that might just come right out of MASK and we could just be reviewing something that we've already had in the past. But I also feel like it's nice to know if you are, if you receive an email and you are unsure of how to respond, who's your contact person? So I think we should be able to identify who that is. And even if it ends up being like your chair, because the chairs could then reach out to each other. So it doesn't necessarily have to be a district employee, but it could. It might be HR, whatever, but we could come to that agreement. I completely understand the idea of being volunteers, especially right now in my, with all my new responsibilities. I can, you know, I'm racing home to get, I mean, I had to leave work early. I had to get permission to leave work early to come here to do this. So there's a lot of constraints. However, maybe we can get something out about response time or some kind of statement that doesn't tie us down to any period of response. I mean, we could do something like a Google, you know, you can set up an automatic reply on your Gmail. And if we all did that together, like we thank you for your input, we will get this information to the correct people, then we're not required to reply. You can just put that on the automatic reply. It goes back to the person who sent it to you. You can look at it and we can make a decision where it goes. So there's that type of thing that could be put in place. But I agree, it needs to be a district. It shouldn't be, you know, some schools doing this, some schools doing that. And I think our chairs are feeling the same way. And then, so if we do not do an automatic response, but we feel like we need to, maybe having some sort of template for if a teacher reaches out or if a parent, a parent reaches out, a happy parent reaches out, like some kind of, you know, I think Jill called it a rubric, but some kind of a template, you know, we might be talking same language, that gives us guidance. And again, is a district-wide. But that is where I come kind of thinking, I'm wondering if this does belong in policy somewhere, I'm not sure. But, so all of those ideas kind of occurred to me. And if you are so willing, I can reach out and just send an email kind of summarizing that so that we can move forward. So please let me know, does anybody have a response to that? Jill?
It sounds like a good plan. And, you know, it also makes me think of a little more to, you know, that there's, again, our roles and responsibilities, but in addition to that, whether one responds as an individual or as one responds as a school committee member. And that's something that we need to be careful of. So in other words, even with Facebook and what I've seen for letters to the editor, you know, sometimes I'll see that there's a letter to the editor, not the school committee, but I have seen letters to the editor where it says such and such, such and such school committee. And they are speaking for themselves, they're not speaking for their school committee. And I did go to a media workshop at the MASK Mask Conference. And that's something that they said very clearly, that people have to be so careful about on social media to clarify you're responding as an individual, to have that in writing, that you're responding as an individual, not as a school committee member. So whether it's a letter to the editor in the paper or unless there has been a meeting and a consensus that this does represent a school committee. Again, you know, it's, it's, there's even a wider net that might be valuable, you know, for joint school committee education to, or guidance, rather.
Thank you, Jill. That just made me think, you know, as a teacher and educator, every year there are required trainings. And, and sometimes it's running through a PowerPoint, but each September, teachers are required to have their annual trainings. And perhaps the school committee, you know, needs to, I do remember we did it at large in Eastham and we had the very formal training from MASK. But perhaps there is something, after we create this or document or we put something together, but then each school committee member kind of signs off like, yes, I've reviewed it every year. Because we constantly get new people, you know, in the middle of the year or, you know, depending on how things run. But that might be a nice way, because there are a lot of little issues to remember and, and a lot of modes of communication. So I'll just kind of add that, I wrote down your two comments. And I just kind of added like possibility of in the annual training. So if you would like me to move forward and email the chair, just show me with your thumb in the window. And I can, as long as we have consensus, I can certainly move forward. Okay, I'll send that out. All right, anything else on this topic before we move on? All right, then we go to, okay, we are going to approve the staff responsibility use policy for a first reading. Just to give you a little, and I'll probably ask Arlen to back me up on this, but a little history. This has been in the works for a while. It ran, we wanted the union to sort of be able to agree with it and, and hold it. And they did at the way, way, I think this is back when perhaps Dr. Hoffman was the superintendent. There was some scrutiny on it. And then, I don't know, maybe the policy just dropped, we dropped it for a little bit. We had bigger and other things that we needed to do. But we certainly have always had it on our back burner. And, you know, we are ready to move on it as our union members are involved in the multitude of negotiations. And our two top union members are at every single negotiations meeting. So for them to have their input has been a little tricky. We think that it's going to be okay. But we decided for our student safety that we needed to go ahead and approve it for our first reading. So each committee will be doing that at their main meetings. So it doesn't mean that it may not be revised and they may not have input, but we do feel that it's time to move on it. One more thing before I ask anybody for their comments on it is that I think it's Carol Fojoni, Fojoni, is that right, Arlen, who's worked with us on this?
Actually, it's Eileen.
Sorry, Eileen, I knew it was one, so she's our HR, correct?
Eileen is Director of Technology.
Oh, yes, okay, sorry. So Eileen, our new Director of Technology has been, is extremely supportive. And she brought in some, some documents from other districts. We found one we liked. I mean, ask Arlen, we have reviewed it, wordsmithed it, syntaxed it, grammared it. We have really a hotshot policy team right now with, I don't know if you know both Judy's, but like we have some great people, Judy Leck and Judy.
Schumacher.
Schumacher, like we have Billy Josh on there, we have a great team. So, so nary a pebble is unturned. At any rate, ask for any comments on that? And if none, I'll take a motion. Yes, Martha?
As you know, I am keen to find little things. I found nothing, I went over it twice. Thought on and so thorough, it's absolutely excellent. It covers everything. I mean, it really is incredibly well done.
Thank you, Martha. Jan?
I found something I didn't like.
Okay, Jan.
Okay, it's the word steal. I don't think that a policy for a school department should consider having such a word in their documents that would allude to the fact that a teacher or some person would steal something else. And I think it's totally unnecessary in the syntax where it is. This is on page two, under password protection, line four. Right after the word steal, it says, or use another person's password. Well, that's right, use another person's password. That's reasonable language. But to say somebody, that somebody shouldn't steal the password really bothers me. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Jan. Any other comments? Martha?
Absolutely agree with Jan. I think that you don't need that word. It's redundant and it's ugly. After I said all those nice things. It would read the same way, I think, without it.
Yeah, okay, so that just presents a little conundrum, because this is already going out to all the meetings. And if we decide, so this is, we, we can decide to vote it down. And then it has to go back. And then it has to go back to the policy. We can't revise it here and vote on it because it's going to all the committees. Am I right about that, Arlen?
Yes.
So I guess I'm going to ask you, like, how important is that? Like, I completely understand. And as a committee, I'll just ask everyone to sort of think about that for a minute because this policy has been 10 years in trying to get on the books. So Jan, I see.
Well, I would just suggest, since we're the first meeting, Betsy, and all the others follow us, that you might send an email to the other chairs and tell them that that word came up at our school committee meeting. And might they consider striking that when they look over there, when they review the policy? I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with alerting people to that if you want to. I mean, to me, to me, it's a horrible word to use, so. But I'm not going to be here much longer, so I will acquiesce if you don't want to do that.
Okay, I just want to check in with Arlen. Is that a possibility for me to contact? I mean, I, I'm just wondering whether it's, it is a chair responsibility or if it's a policy, like we would need to get the convene the policy committee back. That's my only question.
I'm new. Before, I don't know. I don't know, Betsy. It's in the packets to the other committees, so as is, but you are the first committee to look at it.
Yeah.
So we could change.
I can also like, just, I guess now I would just look to Jan's expertise. Like in the past, is that how you might have handled something where?
We have done that in the past a couple of times, Betsy, because we're always first, which is why it comes to my mind that, you know, it, it could be done if it's important to other people. If it's only important to me, then let's not worry and make a big deal. I just think that words matter. And I, I'm just so amazed after all these years of you're looking at it that that did not strike people on this policy committee as a really horrible word to use. It's troublesome to me.
Okay, I'm just going to ask any other committee member that wishes to weigh in on this. Laura?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think if it would be a semi-easy, send an email and see if we can get it worked out before. I, I mean, I, I tend to, I agree. The word probably shouldn't be in there. So I, I, if it, but again, I think it's, I would hate for the whole thing to start over because of it. So it's, yeah.
I'm just going to play devil's advocate for one moment. And I'm just going to suggest that using another person's password and stealing are not the same thing. And, and in this day and age, there is a lot of that going on in sort of cyberspace. But to insinuate, I mean, I think that's not necessarily Jan's point. Jan's point is that we should not be insinuating that any of our teachers or students would do that behavior. But then I want to, in a very awkward way, remind you that we do have things that should not happen in schools, happen in schools. And so if it's not outlined in the past, in the policy, I'm just wondering if it happens. Do we have recourse? I don't know. I'm just a little bit playing devil's advocate.
Plagiarism is, to me, the same word as steal. I mean, right? And that's used. So, yeah.
I mean, if you think about some of the other policies that we have around harassment and bullying and things like that, some of those get pretty explicit because you have to have the language in there. But I will rest my case now. I have voiced my opinion and it is really the will of the group. So I will see if we have a motion and what that motion is. I'll wait for, for a group member to make a motion and then we can vote and make a motion. We can discuss and then we can vote as we see, so.
I will make the motions. I move that we strike the word steal from page two, the section on password protection, line four of this policy.
Martha, do you have a? You're muted, Martha. I didn't hear what you said.
All right, if I, if I second it, can we have a discussion before we vote?
Yes.
Okay, then I, I second it.
Okay. And then it's a discussion on the motion as worded by Jan. Martha?
Yes, I was just looking again. There are a number of words here that, that strike me as, that could be read the same way. And I think if we really do want to protect our students, I think we have to word things strongly, Jan. The more I think about it, for example, under illegal activities on page five, sexting. I mean, it would, it's awful to have to think about this happening with our staff or our students. But it is something that could happen. And I think Betsy's point, I've been flip flopping all over the place here. It's a really tough question, but I think Betsy's point about our recourse is important that, that in terms of legality, we need, we need to spell it out. It's, it's sad, but.
Oh, sorry.
The more I think about it, I mean, to share a password or to, and to use another person's and to steal are all different things. Because I use my parents' Netflix password, but I'm not stealing it. But if someone did it without my knowledge, they would be stealing it. And I think those are two different things and sharing is also, so as I think about it, they are different. And I, yeah. So I, yeah, I think we, it maybe should be in because it is different.
The word.
Martha?
The word theft is used. And when I read these things, it never even struck me as something that we should be concerned about putting in writing until Jan spoke up. But the word theft is used under, just above security on page six. So we'd have to go through this again and strike out a whole lot of words. And I don't think we want to do that. Anyway.
Further discussion? Okay, then, Arlen, can you see everybody in the window? So maybe with your thumb, could you show how you'd like to vote on Jan's motion? Okay, so the motion fails. So I'm wondering if we have another motion?
I move we accept the draft. The original draft.
I think you have to word it a first, do you have to word it using a first read? I motion, make a motion to, I'm sorry, I'm going back to my agenda. I'm, I make a motion to approve the staff responsibility use policy for a first reading.
Yes.
So moved, she says.
So moved.
Do I have a second? And then any discussion on this motion? Okay, then ready for a vote on this motion? Thumb in the window.
Three, four. Four and one abstain. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, I always appreciate the fact that we can differ and, and discourse. And I just want to say that so many people tell us what a wonderful committee we have. And I think it's because of all of you. All right.
No, I use my parents' Netflix account.
Yeah, you know, you're on, you're.
They know it, they know.
But that's the difference too. It's a consent. You've got permission, you know? But both parties has said yes.
All right, Cape Cod Collaborative, you're up on the chopping block.
There was a meeting April 14th. There's a meeting tomorrow. I must say, it's always a challenge to condense the collaborative meetings because the usual time is about three hours, a three hour meeting. There's so many people on it and there's so much on the agenda. So here I go. We have been looking at the latest spending plan and budget draft. And we vote for sure on it tomorrow, where there will be a 2% salary increase and a 2.8% in sped tuition. Big strategic planning going on. It's overdue and at the moment, there's a timeline. And it's going to be a lot of representatives on the strategic planning since the collaborative exists for the needs of all the member districts. And that's fluid. So at one time, it was all about special needs. And then it went into transportation and, you know, so professional development. So there will be a lot of input from stakeholders such as board members, school committee people, current administrators for the future role that the collaborative would be having for everybody. And to access regional, of course, all the, once again, the stakeholders for what do they see as the needs? The Osterville Playground, the one for the younger children, that's been a rough spot where, as we know, expensive equipment and raising money. The Cape Cod Challenger Club, which deals with special needs children, has been very helpful in adding to the fundraising as far as raffles and vending fun donations. And there have been some bigger donations. Somebody passed on and actually left money for the Cape Cod Collaborative Playground Fund, which is quite nice. I had strongly suggested for them to do a press release. You know, why not? So sooner or later, there's going to be a press release about donations. So not only will the children of the Osterville School there be able to take advantage of it, but also others, you know, it would be open to the public as well. Bridgewater State continues to be an integral partner in professional development. Kara Peterson, who is a new director at Waypoint, the alternative high school, she very happily gave a new report or her latest report that they had a crazy hat day, which was very successful and fun for the kids and the alternative high school kids and a crazy hair day, which was a great success. And the numbers in the middle school alternative ed are growing. All Cape service, as we know, the collaborative is instrumental in professional development. And annually, before COVID, they would have in the fall, a professional development day. So that has been established for October 8th. And the professional development they give are for the teachers and services that, the numbers are smaller, so such as library people, English as the second language, early childhood people, music, art, career tech, education, counseling. Those are the highlights.
Thank you, Jill. Any questions for Jill? All right, thank you so much. Preschool enrollment, did anyone have any questions? Arlen did send that in a separate email. Jan?
Yeah, that looked so low. Mary Beth, do we just not have so many special needs kids anymore?
At the moment, the numbers are accurate, but we don't, we're not seeing that sort of that increase that we saw back in 2014, 15.
Isn't that wonderful?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. PTA and Behavioral Health Task Force?
I think we're meeting this month. I'm waiting to hear when. No report.
Okay, school council?
We're meeting on the 25th and then at the June 8th meeting, I'll be presenting the school improvement plan.
Great. Housing Task Force Committee, was there something, Jan?
Yes, actually, something very exciting. Tomorrow, tomorrow, the specs go out for our project. And it's really very exciting. We will advertise for a couple of weeks. And then we'll give developers 60 days or so to develop their thoughts and get funding and so forth. And I think at the very end of July or for August 1st, everything has to come back. And then our committee will decide, God willing, on a project and get it underway. So it's very exciting stuff.
Yay, that is great news.
Yeah.
And future agenda items? Jill?
Town meeting.
That's a good one. Mary Beth?
That just reminded me, we were invited to the FinCom central office and myself to talk about the budget for FY '22. And that is next Wednesday, the 26th, I believe, at 7:00 PM. Of course, it's a remote meeting. So I know that Tom and Giovanna were planning on being there as well as I am. And so I'll share my presentation that I did for the public hearing at that meeting.
Thank you. Mary Beth, is there any way to send me a link when you get the, the link?
I don't know if I got a link yet.
Well, when you do, would you forward it my way? I'd like to be there.
I can send it to you.
Oh, thank you, Rebecca.
Sure.
And could you send it to all of us?
Of course.
United we stand.
Sure.
And then those able to attend will attend. Yeah.
We will link arms.
Jill?
I can't be there. That's going to be a six day week off the Cape for work. Leaving on Sunday and I'm coming back that Friday night when I get into my hotel at seven. I'm wiped plus I have about three hours reports to send off. I'm.
We will hopefully.
I won't be there.
We'll report good news to you when they, when they favorize. All right, anything else for future agenda items? Laura?
I just have a quick question. I don't think this is agenda. But are, are all our meetings, even throughout the summer, the same time?
I, generally in June, we discuss the need for summer meetings. So I'm, that's a future agenda item, the need for meetings. Thank you. Okay. I'll move us on to minutes then.
I move we accept the minutes as presented.
And it looks like Laura is seconding that, is there any discussion? Okay, give me a thumb for your vote on the minutes. Got it, okay. And bills were paid last week, so we're good on that. And so I'll take a motion for adjournment when you're ready. Okay, so you got about two seconds and definitely a journer from Jan.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.